Was at the Monday meeting, we had a spreadsheet pickup thing for today. And in essence, we were, when we calculated everything out, it looked as though we had gone to nine point two. The reason for that was in the spreadsheet formula, we had under cultural resources, we didn't have anything there. And so when I added it, I added it at the bottom, and then they turned around and accounted for it in the subtotal. So it cut it twice and gave us a nine point two number, which later on, our squash attorney said, hey, I think y'all approved it at eight point seven. You might want to go back and amend, and then we went back and had somebody a little smarter than me, and this Lolita, went back and looked at the formula and realized that I actually copied the five hundred thousand twice. And so we were actually at the amount that was ultimately corrected, eight point seven. And, you know, one of the things we wanted to talk about was to amend that, but the other one was also part of this squash project, obviously, was that we put on there. And this is something I want you guys to look at, this is the first time you guys are seeing it, that is the consolidated list of our, of everything. So what you have is you have your master list that we approved back in 2013, a total of twenty-two point nine, that was our wish lists. So you see that in the first column, and that's on the spreadsheet, that's listed as suggested appropriation. What you see next to that is your bonded projects numbers. You don't want to, do you have a copy, Chief, is there a copy?
Yeah, we have plenty back there.
Did you get a copy for the money from you, please? Buddy, I just finished this thing off, so I have a chance to send it to you before, before I apologize. I told Bill I was working on this inside.
Yeah, me, Bill and I have been working on it too, so go right ahead.
Okay, so, so in essence, what you see here now is, and as I told you all, I wanted to be able to, and I'm going to have a long, a long in-depth discussion, but we're going to be having a full council here so everybody could have an input. On September fourth, we need the workshop to kind of go over the impact on the paygo side of this thing. One of the things I want you all to see is you have your suggested amount, so you've got your run total, you've got your bonded projects. What that bonded project total look like, and it equals the eight point seven million that we came up with on Monday. The difference is, what you see next to that is your paygo projects, which is the difference between what you bond financing, what's left out of that amount. And that's, that's the key part that I want everybody to focus on. And I want to get into that discussion more on Monday because this is just, one of the things we want to discuss was the Avalon Park as well as this. But I want you all to keep in mind that, that wonderful number of fourteen million dollars. And so y'all can give, give some, some thought to that number. And on the fourth, I'm hoping that on the fourth of the workshop, when we come back, I want us to basically be able to, to, to look at our overall paygo project list and minimize that. And here's why, if you're looking on your screen right now, at the bottom, your paygo is, is listed as fourteen point three, that's the remainder. Obviously, right now, our latest analysis from Bill has got us right around the bonding eight point seven million. And we're looking at bringing in somewhere around seven million on the paygo side. As you can tell, that seven million do not add up to fourteen point three. And so at some point, we, as best we can, need to riddle that fourteen point three down to seven. That's the most prudent approach to take on the paygo side. And, and my goal is to come back on, on the, on the September fourth meeting with you guys and, and give some list of options on how we can maybe accomplish that. But also then to incorporate whatever input you guys want to put forward to the staff to, to look at that. Because, you know, the twenty-two point nine was just our wish lists. And then based on the feasibility and the analysis of what we're bringing in, and, and this is what Bill Kemp did to get to the numbers we get into. They've looked at the last twelve months worth of sales tax collection in Henry County. And, and our appropriate share of those sales tax is right around nine point one eight percent, somewhere in there. So that's how they're able to come up with this calculation of where we, where they see us. Now, you know, we have a lot of developments still we have to come out of the ground, commercial lives, that would obviously impact us. If South Point gets two more restaurants in the Kia and Nissan come out of the ground, we'll see some bump in those areas there. But ultimately, you know, this is the number we're going to go with, which is the most conservative number. So, you know, I want you all to keep in mind, as you look over the spreadsheet, run it through your head, to come back on the fourth, so that we can say, okay, how do we approach riddling down those, that, that, that paygo list? To something that's a little bit more manageable and feasible for staff, we riddle it down so we can make things happen. Recognizing that you already got some projects already ongoing. And, and, and we're calling it phase one of your paygo. And so right now, on phase one of your paygo, you've got your cemetery project going. To some degree, we pulled just to do the design work on the Jonesboro Road Park, that's going. We're purchasing our police cars, that's going. IT is currently expending some funds right now to get us our IT and computers. We'll take ownership of our first pumping truck on Monday.
Yes, sir.
On Monday, and we'll start our three month allotment payment of eighty-nine thousand dollars. But this, this is just a preview, you're going to get the in-depth breakdown on the fourth, on what we paid to date per each one of these. So y'all are going to see that come to y'all on the fourth, and we'll present that to y'all, and we're putting that on the internet after the meeting. So everybody will know which, which things, how much we've spent to date on each one, the computers, the police cars, and so forth. Because the police cars are going to be on that agenda for the fourth, so you'll see all that information. And we're going to put it out there so the public will have it, so nobody can scream that they don't know where the money's going. It's going to be an open in the sunshine. So that's one of the things we're going to do, and if you look at the bottom of my spreadsheet, you're going to see there, my next goal and work with you guys is to come up with phase two. What do y'all see, after we riddle down that number from fourteen to close to seven? Probably somewhere around four million dollars is what you're going to end up at. To be quite honest with you, to save some money just in case we have one of our other projects come short, that we have some money left aside, this contingency, so we can have that discussion. But to go back to the main, the other reason why I was here was, one of the things that we talked about bond financing was the Avalon Park. These were the three projects that we added on most recently to the, to the squash bonded list. We added these three projects to the squash bonded list. And one of the things we did was on the Avalon side was to put, was to put a million dollars aside to look at stuff to acquire the property for the parking racks. In order to do that, we need to get authority from you guys to go ahead and get them a president, so that we can approach the property owner to see exactly, one, what the property's worth, and two, what the person who's looking to sell it for. And so that, we need that authorization to get that ball over as quickly as possible. And outside of that, if y'all have any other items that y'all want to discuss, I have one more thing I wanted to bring to your attention, and I was hoping to hear back from the county. As it relates to the McDonnell Parkway projects, the twenty-eight-one expansion, and the Turner Church, the intersection of the Turner Church to one fifty-five forty-two expansion. I spoke to Rocky Romero, who's the squash, county squash director this morning, had a conversation with Sherry Matthews. Right now, the Turner Church project is on their paygo list, it's not on their bonded list. And if that's the case, and I told Rocky I need some high-fives information because I need to make a decision, I hadn't heard about from him. He said he was going to try to call Commissioner Brown, because that's in his district, to see if Commissioner Brown was going to put that on the county's squash list or not. I haven't heard about from him to date, so there's a potential. I also added more to twenty-one, twenty-eight-one intersection, that's also more on the bonded list, that's on the paygo list. So those two makes up one point five million dollars that could potentially come off this list. If the county's not going to bond those, it makes no sense for us to go ahead and get a check in the symbol for a project that's not going to be funded, finished in a three-year period. So I haven't heard about from Rocky Romero yet. And I told him I had two o'clock window to play with, and I haven't heard about from him yet. Buddy, is there any additional time we have?
Yeah, we do have some additional time if we need to, but here's, I talked with Jim Monticello yesterday, who's the county's bond lawyer. And when the taxpayers voted on squash, we had four or five statements that cover all of this, okay? Just because you set this up, when we issue the bonds and issue the final bond resolution, we're going back to those, to the ballot, to the actual ballot, where there won't be any question that we can use it. If you decide to amend this thing and change it, you're not going to be locked into it, is what I'm saying. And I, I'd be amazed if you go get the county to put in those ideas, Frederick, in their bonds. They're doing a lot of pay-as-you-go type things, looking for the state to help and all of that, so I, I don't know, but you surely wouldn't want those two projects to get away from you.
Correct.
If they decide to go. So my best advice is, is leave them alone, and then if you have to, if they don't go with them, then move that to some other projects that you have.
We, we can move it within side of that street improvements box, right?
You can, you can move it outside the street improvement box, okay? What you've done is, you started with your wish list, which is everything you'd like to do. The next thing was, is that we went to the voters and said, we're going to spend it on these specific types of projects, okay, public projects. Then you're coming back now, you're trying to hone in as to what projects you're going to do first. And we, we made sure that Monticello and, and Bill Kemp were satisfied that everything on this list fit into those items that the voters voted on. That was the key, okay? We also asked him whether or not, if he wanted to go to nine point two, how would that affect you, could we do it? And he did, he said yes, we got the numbers to, to senior attorney and to Frederick. And what it means is, is about a half a billion dollars in your paygo that you won't have unless we have more squash money coming in. So you can go either way you want to go on this, and you've got some real flexibility, if you want to change things, I just don't think you all get past that nine point two. I think you need to, I need, I just think that's getting to the stretch of it, so.
And, and, and as Buddy said, Buddy, we hired, just we bond financed the last that we get with it.
Right.
And it drains the paygo pretty quick. When you look at it, the higher that number gets, the, the percentage hits on the paygo side. And because we have some projects on the paygo side, specifically, you know, we've got the education and housing. We've got a number of streets projects on, on here, road improvement projects, where it's just a percentage of, which, you know, ultimately, I think it makes sense to, to, to do something, and I give an example. Roadway improvements, repaving, we, we put five point five million, we bonded financing one point three million, there's a difference of four point two. I mean, in the six-year period, on top of the LNE money, we typically get rid of just right around a hundred and sixty-something thousand dollars from F and State A Program, LNE, for repaving on an annual basis. Something like that on top of, and so you're, you're looking at about two million dollars, or, no, more than, excuse me, I'm looking at a hundred and something, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars plus for the percentage rebreak off. Which to me would make sense to say, okay, divide that one point three by six, that gives you a, a lot more on top of the LNE, is what you're going to pay. And as we was, I was talking with Snoddy, that, you know, part of what we're doing now is we want to get some of that LNE money spent. But, you know, the, the cheaper paving is held up with the Jonesboro Road and the state and the county giving Jonesboro Road.
And even, and even if, and the problem we are facing is, is working out where the savings would be because even if GDOT were to say, they would waive the year waiting period for us to take over Jonesboro Road. And we could take it over so that we could then get the, the savings with the, you know, with the, with the paving. We still have to come up with enough money for at least temporary help during certain seasons to be able to manage Jonesboro well.
That's right, and, and I love the screen of Snoddy, you know, to trade, if we, if we look at the difference in what we would save for the county to pave, which is cheaper than having a private consultant pave. And try to move that money, that still reduces our linear footage of, of road they pave. So ultimately, the goal is to pave as much as you can, but to fund you, put the local funds you have. That way we get all buying for our buck, and I think that's what everybody's looking for, how do we make sure we get the best money for the buck and pay the necessary bills that need to be paid? That's why I, I want us to really look at that category, that's a huge one, a four point something. The other one I want you all to really look at too is, and this is, I know we've had some discussions on the cultural resource, because we, we did put in our wish list four million dollars there, we're looking at five hundred. I think that three point five, that whole four million was looking at acquisition, I don't think we ever discussed building facility, I think that was all purchasing facility existing.
I think all existing wasn't talked about.
Yeah, it wasn't any to build and any new. So everything that I was looking at getting an existing building and renovating that for, for, for each, for one of those purposes. I know the community center was rehabbing the court facility when we moved to turn that into a community resource center. And so we looked at that and a lot of some money in the breakdown that we could create for that purpose. Ultimately, is that something that's going to happen, you know, we need to look at that. But that's, that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention. There is, there is the possibility that some, that we can lower that, lower our current bonded list based on the conversations we're going to have with the county as it relates to Turner Church. So there's a potential for us to move one point five million dollars, either up or down off.
And.
No, no, we can't move it off, excuse me, we can't move it off, because if the county's doing it bigger, we still have to come for that, our share of whatever that agreement was.
Yeah, I think the way to cover it where you won't have to keep coming back every time the county makes a move, is that if you, if you have a resolution that says it's going to be eight point seven max or nine point two max, what are that figure's going to be? But if the county does not participate in this, then you can elect to reduce it back.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? Or elect to move it over to something else. You've got plenty of projects to build.
Mr. Ryan, would you, would you, or do you want me to, about the Gateway Tournamentus East, I mean, I'm sorry, West?
Yes, ma'am, you can, you can bring it up and I'll shift it, if, if, if the board wants to, if Snoddy was talking, as you mentioned.
Well, and, and this is.
The possibility of getting that done pretty quickly.
And based on what he said is one thing, and then us not thinking in our minds that we can do it, when it needs to be done is another thing. The Gateway West Tournamentus, based on discussions that are now ongoing with property owners and what have, as well as our own consultants concerning Doris Street and the entrance to the park. The park entrance can, that entrance can be constructed and a light put there within the existing right of way. And also without changing the, anything on the DOT's plans, without having to expand or do anything to the DOT's plans for the one-way payers. And we need to be able to get into the park long before DOT is going to let this contract. And we need funds to be able to improve that intersection and put a pole light there, a string light, not a pole light, a string light, red light there. And I'd like to move that over to the bonded list, because I know that that will be done.
Mrs. Nadya, you said we'll be done within three years or what?
Yes, it has to be done within the three years. In fact, it'll be done probably shorter period than that.
And they've approved that light?
They have not approved it, it's in the works of it, and the, they have no other alternative other than a roundabout that has to be taken out of the list and possibly done later, or not done at all. Meanwhile, we do not have an entrance to the park. So this, this, plus we have to buy additional property. And this keeps us from having to buy any additional property ourselves, let alone what DOT would have to put, purchase. And we did agree that if they did a roundabout, we would purchase all of the necessary property. So this, this keeps it on our existing land, and it takes care of site distance, and it takes care of all the other problems that are associated with that.
What is the penalty if we run over three years, if it cannot be completed within three years?
As long as you've got it under contract, you've got period of time defined. And, and the penalty doesn't come into effect unless you have an arbitrage problem, which means you're making money on top of.
Getting interest on top of the money.
Yeah, and you're making money, as it is right now, it's about squash.
I guess my only question on that project is, we talked about phase two of paygo, after phase one is spent, how much of a, it's about a million dollars, right?
Yeah, when, when you add up, and Lolita, because you can look at the numbers more freshly, when you add up the, the monies for the graveyard, the IT, the trucks, and the police cars. You, we're right up about one point, one point six million dollars, which, at which point, we're, we were, based on, on Bill's calculations, we should bring in somewhere around two point five. Over the cost of, of a, of a twelve-month period from April to March, somewhere around there, before we have to make our payments and, and for, for the bonded money in 2015. So we're right around nine hundred thousand dollars that then can go to start looking at phase two sets of projects.
I just think this might be a good, good thing to put on phase two, so that we can use paygo, not bond that three fifty.
The only problem is.
Doesn't change.
Well, what if we, yeah, it does, because what if we got a permit in six months and we are constructing over there?
We'll have that money in six months, right?
Hmm, yeah.
A permit.
In six months, yeah. We're bringing in, well, if, if you, if you look at what you have, if you look at what you have a lot, Lolita, you have, it's just a real quick.
You're talking about final, you're talking about.
If you, if you look at, if you do fake, if you do right now, let me get down here so we can get to the cell. Phase one, does the calculations handle? Okay, here you go. So the one point nine includes what, those all?
If you go get the project to, about a little approval to the top, and then those totals right there, those other projects that's been approved, which is the cemetery, the Jonesboro Road, that's what he took there. That total comes up one point nine million dollars. If you do, the revenue's at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month, you come up with a two point four million dollars, you get five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to that, to start, to start, and that's a, that's a, if you're looking at a date, date, specific time, that's around March or April.
It takes us to March.
Of twenty fifteen, that's it.
Takes us to May.
No, but.
So if you say within the six-month period.
You've already used it, Fred, in sidewalks.
No, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't proven, y'all haven't approved any sidewalk construction as, as part of, of paygo at this point. The only paygo projects that have been approved are the ones that you see on the screen.
What I'm saying is, we could, because we are having to sign off with DOT in October, when we have our public meeting, because we're going to be signing off with DOT. There is a high probability that that will be totally resolved by October meeting, which means that they could issue to us the right to go ahead with that intersection. And I don't want us caught in a situation where we can't.
Why don't we remove one A and add the red light? One A is the purchase of the theater, we don't have set plans or know what we're going to do with it, so why don't we even have it in the bonded project?
Y'all, I think, y'all, that was what I said, y'all were doing on Monday. I think what she's saying is, on the paygo side of this thing, if, if we put it on the paygo side, that we have enough money in the paygo to be able to make it happen. You know, one of the things I want you all to recognize too, if, if, if you're looking at your current paygo projects, okay? Construction, construction, construction of the cemetery is not going to happen before Christmas, that's not going to happen, I mean, this is no physical way that can happen. So we, you have a contract that's coming to you guys on the fourth to hire AMAC to then do the market analysis. And from the market analysis, they will do the master plan and the construction drawings. And they're going to make that public and go through a process, so that everybody can have a reading, and they see what the market analysis says, and how they design. That's what they're going to do once, so, you know, out the most you're spending from the cemetery, you're going to spend thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And let me check how that break down. We just approved the geotechnical work for eight thousand two hundred and fifty to get the geotech work on those three lots, so they can stop on those. Of those three lots, you probably won't be able to make movement on one of them, because the two on Macon Street are probably not, because we don't have access, other than to put another access off of Macon Street, which makes no sense, I mean, four access on the cemetery for Macon Street. That's, that forces us to have to go off to a piece of property that, you know, they have been talking about for a while, the weems problem, and they're asking way more, I don't know if that probably even a phrase, but that's something, that's a discussion we're going to have to happen. We're about to come, have that discussion with them to utilize those two months effective. So the geotech work is ongoing now. The study and the market analysis, when you get your, your pocket, you'll see that that's twenty-eight thousand, twelve thousand five hundred for the market analysis, and fifteen thousand five hundred for the, for the site finding work and the construction drawings, the master planning process. So that's twenty-eight thousand plus the, that's how much you expended from there. So once they go through that process, we won't start construction in the winter, that don't make any sense. So the earliest I see us doing construction on the cemetery is going to be somewhere around, I want to, May or, or June or next year.
So you say we can borrow from that fund?
So in essence, if, if you have to, yes, that's an option, but you can basically, that's why I was saying, that's why we want to mob this, is because we can keep track of the result.
I'm a roundabout person myself.
It doesn't work.
So that's, that's.
Well, if it's bonded, that's working, and they told you it would be part of this project.
No, the last company, I think, told me that it's working.
They're working on it, but they say that it will not be part of the project.
It's not, but there's some option.
And you haven't seen the drawings and what it does to our commercial over across the street, it absolutely burns it for them.
Well, I have a little different feel than that.
Well, the, the drawings don't lie, okay, so we'll see.
I want to go back to the list of bonded projects. If the projects that are bonded are projects which were construction can begin immediately or within the next twelve months, and needs to be completed within three years, then please tell me why we have some of these projects on this list, such as the Jonesboro Road Park.
The Jonesboro Road Park, you purchased for a million dollars four, five years ago. You, we put that money on there because we already hired a consultant doing the design, and that design will be finished pretty soon. Once that done, yeah, you have a set of potential drawings to move forward with for construction of the park, which can get done in three years.
Do you have any agreement with the county?
We have.
They own part of the park too?
The, the one that we haven't done is, look at any agreement with the county. You know, I have to go back and try to get all of those documents to find out what, what the deal was with that piece of property when it was purchased, pocket oh nine, oh ten. I have to go back and try to get all of those documents to find out what the deal was with that piece of property when it was purchased, Pago nine or ten. I don't have that information really, really.
We don't have a dental governmental agreement on that.
And so if that's something we need to get done, that can be done as we are actually doing the site lines, work the master planning work that needs to be done. All of those can happen in conjunction with each other.
Is there any guarantee that the county's going to allow us to utilize the project?
My last conversations with Mr. Tim Colley a year ago, almost two years ago, you know, was the county didn't have any money to put towards this project and wouldn't look in and do anything, because initially they wanted to put a track over there, obviously, a competitive track is what they were talking about. And I told him, I said, you know, I, I'm sorry, I don't plan, you don't put high activity in residential neighborhood. It is, who does that? That makes no sense, because you have competing events, and those events bring crowds, and those crowds bring traffic. That's not where that piece of property should be utilized, what should be some possibly used for, uh, heavy activity used. And I think they were talking about soccer fields. The county already got twenty something soccer fields from Long Conville Road, and it's due to build another ten on Fairview as part of Mr. Holmes' project, so that soccer field is dead. So right now, it's gonna be up to the city to take the lead and move forward and making that thing happen.
You're gonna need approval from the EPA slash EPD to disturb those wetlands, because that's been declared wetlands part of it.
We have wetlands in just about every park, we have, that's part of the permitting process, that'll be part of the building and construction phase when that time comes.
And you can do that within three years?
You gotta remember what the attorney said, you have to be able to have the property in movement. Once the project is in movement, you don't have to worry about how the project is at that point. So once we start expending monies to design and construct, you are in construction phase, so you're clear. That's not an issue, I think he just addressed that just a minute ago, correct me if I wrong?
Yeah, the project itself has to be under contract. If you got the project under contract, of course, you can do that by having your own design, or you can do a design bill. And most, most people now go into design bill, oh, you get it done quicker, and you got some latitude and changing on it.
That project, that project being, that's been set there since two thousand nine.
I attended the charade before, I became a city employee in twenty-ten, and I was telling Commissioner Pruitt, Councilman Pruitt, I was telling him, I was looking at the city employee, being a former county employee, you also attended the charade about thirty, you go to the elementary school to talk about my supplying that piece of property, and that was twenty-ten. So then at least that long that I know that there's been an open public process on that.
My main concern is that many of these projects, while they're worthwhile, they're not actually streets or sidewalk improvements or something that taxpayers actually wanna use every day.
Uh, Mr. Pruitt, I would see different three parking sidewalks, depending on where you put the sidewalks, everybody walking them.
But that car, but that car sells some, you know, kids and say, if they do a unit of that neighborhood.
They will, the only, the only thing, the only thing I worry about is the cooperation with the county, because it fell through, Sandra did absolutely everything she could to get things moved forward and to get an agreement and to make it possible for that part to move forward. And then the county would not do it. And unless the county is willing to give us permission, then no matter what we do, we can't do anything with it, unless, of course, I guess we're willing to buy them out. And, or, and I'm sure they aren't gonna buy us out. I have no problem with that part being done, because it connects and finishes a greenway. It finishes out part of the greenway that we have for the entire city. So, and it does service an awful lot of people there, so.
And I think y'all should have that discussion with the Senator, so she could more defend that, because I mean, that's been an issue she's been working on. I think that makes-
Right, and we get, we get approved funds. We did approve funds, and I'm sorry, we didn't do our due diligence in getting a clear assessment of the situation with the county. But having said that, that part still, I think, needs to be, we've got a million dollar investment in it. I mean, how many acres is in that park? I can't remember. Nineteen acres have been spent, and really, the cost of the property is literally two point one million dollars. One point two, so it's two point two million dollars for that nineteen acres. So, and we have a million dollars in it, so I don't think we can continue to allow it just to sit. So whatever we can do with the, with the county, I think we need to move ahead. And then that money being part money, should something happen, according to what the attorney has said, then the money could be utilized somewhere else. Avalon Parks out there's got, you'll have to have some stuff in other places. So maybe what we should do is just leave it alone. Because as long as we, we've already started, we actually have already expended some funds on it.
We bought a contract to y'all to hire a consultant to start doing the design?
Forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, so, uh-
The thing with the state with laws with some of that track, it's so poor. And then it's date certain identity, President, you know, for jail suggested, you know, how to take new fall. And I have, I don't know what I have told Congress, and I'm not, not what you said, whether the state would, you know, sanctions have to be moved forward. Date certain, that's been promised until year one.
What do you mean about the red light? That's a charter now, now? Well, if we don't have the red light, then we must purchase the farmer's property in order to have access to the park, because it has to be moved beyond that in order for them to grant us a entrance, a cut. This way, it is the cheapest thing for G I to put a red light there. It is certainly economic for the city to put the red light there, and it certainly solves their traffic problem there. And I drafted the roundabout simply because it was on the plans, and no one, no entity, this government or the DOT had addressed the entrance to a three million dollar plus project. And we don't have ability to get a cut as it stands now. With the red light, we can get the cut, we can get the entrance on the property we own, and it's much cheaper than the roundabout. The roundabout is going to require property on the north side, and it's going to require a lot of property on the south side, back up Doris Street some, in order to accomplish it.
I was told, and it's not a contract, in the acquisition, the vast, all the things, the deal-
No, we are required for the acquisition.
All the things they told me.
And that was the agreement.
Said the thing that you would have to agree to is make up the rest of the roundabout.
Well, that is not what the agreement is said, it's not what we agreed to, it is not what is on this record for the city. They required us on the roundabout, on both ends, to purchase right away. Any additional right away?
Mr. Mary, could we, could we decide whether y'all want eight point seven million or nine point three million? And then y'all can, y'all can figure out how you're gonna spend it. What I'd like to do is try to-
Actually, it wouldn't be nine point three, would it?
Nine point two.
Yeah, right, right, right.
It'd be the maximum, and then with the understanding that y'all can move that around and make a final decision, right?
That's good, that's good. What about Fred?
Before closing out this meeting, I would like to go ahead and ask the Governor's body to seek approval, an appraisal for the Avalon property.
You wanna put that before the motion?
Yes, please.
I'll go second, but that's fine, thank you.
All right.
And-
Any other comments for all of the motions second, dealing with Avalon? Uh, Ms. Price?
Yes, sir.
Comment, question, no question, how about motion second?
The motion is to, to approve, to proceed to have an appraisal done for the Avalon Park.
All right, fair enough. Ladies, gentlemen?
Six in favor, mayor.
That's fair, that's good, thank you so much, Sam, thank you so much.
And I would still like to ask the body, since we're going to nine point two, to please keep in mind that we need access to the park, and without the red light, we have no access, and no access in the near future, because the roundabout is so far down the road and far more expensive. You're talking about two thousand and eighteen, and we're going to have accessible trails and pond and that type of thing within the next eighteen months. So we need to be totally mindful that we need to get what, you know, we can possibly do.
I want the motion that we remove one eighth and add the red light.
Well, it doesn't increase, if you add the red lights, you're still at nine point two, aren't you?
You're under.
You're under. So if we go to nine point two, you're still, you still got the red light?
If you go to nine point two, you don't have to issue all the bonds.
Right.
Okay, you're just approving that as a maximum amount to issue, and then y'all make the ultimate decision where you're spending the money. And it being used for those purposes authorized by the bond database, I mean, excuse me, the-
We just need a set of maximums.
Yes.
One more, I mean, nine, yeah.
Then we just do it. Wait, 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 you got a motion on the floor?
Yes, I got a motion.
Got what?
You, Roger just made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I apologize, Roger. All right, do we have a second? I'm thinking about something else, do we have a second? Okay. Motion's out. So let's get back to the question at hand. So you heard what Buddy says, and I think I'll clear that, and then we can do the details later date. And then we'll walk lines with a recommendation, Fred?
Yeah, and, and, and Mayor, I'm gonna try to make an agenda on the workshop as quick as possible, so we can-
This is good stuff. And Fred, when you do it, go ahead and clear out your Pago.
Yes, that's why I want that agenda, so we're looking always.
So your recommendation, Fred, is nine point two?
Not to exceed Avalon, I mean, not to be reborn at Avalon, I still want us to probably stay as close to two point seven. And like I said, will help us in the process, and hopefully by, by the fourth, I'll have some definitive answer from Rocky on the two McDonough projects that you need to come off the list.
Yeah, that might be good information to have.
With that, I'm paying the motion, vote.
Second.
Nine point two.
Who, 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 who made the motion?
The constituents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Delra, that's a second. Now, ladies, gentlemen, you have opt-ins with more questions as it relates to this motion. Anybody have a question?
I don't have a concern about the money part, but I do have a concern about the list of projects.
We're gonna address that at workshop.
We'll get a workshop. You're not voting on the projects.
We're not voting on the projects, so we can-
I, I-
And we can reduce the amount bonded.
Absolutely. All right, any other questions? Ms. Price?
The motion is to not to exceed nine point two million to be approved for the bonded amount of Sphasold.
Thank you so much, ladies, gentlemen?
It is six in favor, mayor.
Thank you so much, thank you, Councilmembers, that's wonderful. Buddy? Nice seeing you again. Thank you, there, there, again. Isn't it nice to have money to spend, by the way? Amen, amen, okay. Buddy, we're grateful for all the support you've given us. Oh, yeah, I enjoy it, and I'm glad to do it. It just takes us a while to get to that part. And I'll, and, and, Freddie will be in charge. That's right. Touch with me, and we'll go from there, but you got all the numbers from Bill?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, good day, Mr. Murphy. Second. Good day of all in favor, thank y'all so much.